We'll call this meeting to order. Allen Public Schools commit to educate, inspire, and support all students. Amy, you have our role. Thank you. Do you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's a republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our statement of commitment by trustee Tenber.
Policy two point one, the board places the highest priority on the establishment of educational purposes and goals, and reviews these on a regular basis.
Thank you. Members of the audience are welcome to make comments at the designated, at the time designated on the agenda. Please register on the sign up sheet and limit your comments to three minutes when your name is called. Out of respect for all individuals, please refrain from personal criticism in an open forum. Policy one sixty seven point three for more information. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Some sort?
Motion by Pam, support by Anna. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. The motion pass. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Brandon, support by Anna. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. The motion pass. Next is our educational highlights.
We have some all state athletes to honor today. It's very exciting. We have two cross-country runners. I made the mistake of giving them a dad joke and asking if they had to run here, so I have to apologize for that publicly. I'm guessing they hear jokes like that all the time, but very excited to have these young men here.
First is Aiden Ashland.
Great job, guys. And next up, we have all-state boy soccer. This is the first time in the history of Allendale Public Schools that we had a first-team all-state soccer player. Great job, great job. Great job. What's really exciting is too, those young men will be back again next year, so we see some more great stuff out of those athletes. Thank you for being here. You're welcome to stay. You're also welcome to go enjoy the rest of your evening if you'd like. Totally up to you. Good choice. Well, if I was a high school student, I don't know that I'd want to hang around.
Next on the agenda is public comment. There's nobody signed up. Is there anybody who'd like to make comment at this time? We will move to committee reports. Superintendent's report, Dr. Cooper.
Yep, so tomorrow, we have our Veterans Day Assembly at the high school. It's quite a tradition here. It's a great event. Mrs. Murphy always does an amazing job with it as well, so if you can be there, we'd love for you to be there. If you cannot, there's a live stream link. We could get you if you want to livestream it. And if you can't livestream it because you're at work and would like to watch it in the evening, I, my understanding is it's going to be recorded, so you could watch it at another time. So contact me or the high school and we can get you either the live link or the recorded. If you can't be there, but if you can be there, we'd love to have you. It really is an awesome event. Just a reminder, we do have a work session on the 24th and we will have things to consider, so we will need that meeting. Update on thirty-one AA legislation. So Troy and I sat with Kevin and Pam. Trune put on a webinar. We were pretty hopeful, even as they were putting on the webinar, that our legislators would be busy working on some corrective language, and they're not there. And I don't know what's going on at Lansing. My guess is there's a lot with the federal shutdown and, you know, SNAP benefits and all those things. So I wish thirty-one AA was the only thing they had to worry about, but I'm sure they got a million things they're working through. We have not gotten any corrective language yet. Be glad to have Pam and Kevin share some of what they heard at the webinar. A couple of things that concerned me, and I know, Brandon, we had talked about the idea of governmental immunity. And where that's coming from, kind of fleshed it out in this meeting, is that the concern on the attorney's side is that if you give up privilege to get this money, that in going through the privileged information could lead to something coming out that would remove that governmental immunity. I don't know if I said that right, Kevin and Pam, but that's kind of what I took away is that it's not, there's nothing in the language per se that removes governmental immunity. But from the attorney's side, what they're concerned about is that losing that privilege then opens up a lot of things that then somebody could pick away and go, okay, well, this is indifference, so you do lose immunity for that. And so that's where their concern is on the governmental immunity side. And then the other thing that really struck me as being a major concern is there's no timeframe to this. And so from the attorney's standpoint, they're saying an argument could be made that somebody could go back two years ago when the board voted to expel a student and say that, we want all your notes on that, we want all your... Not that we've done anything wrong, but that it could just open up a whole can of worms going, you don't know how far back it'll go. Right now, there's no way of knowing how far in the future it could go, so if we say yes, it could go on. So those were, I think, the biggest concerns beyond what we've already talked about with this.
In some definitions, like...
The mass casualty.
Yeah, I mean, that was, you know, we don't know if a broken arm is considered that or is it, you know, a shooting or something like, like I said, it was just very vague, I think was.
Yeah, three students.
Like a bus accident, you know, a couple of students get injured, you know, bumped around. Now this falls under that category as well. And so the language in almost every aspect of it is just really vague. And so we were kind of hoping they'd, you know, tighten some of that up a little, so, you know, give us a little more, what exactly are the parameters here? And so far, we haven't seen it, so.
They did extend the deadline to November thirtieth, which will allow us to come back on the 24th and revisit this again. And because we're, we run our work sessions like a regular session with public comment, we can take action items. So if we decide that, you know, if something comes out of Lansing and it looks more favorable, as I mentioned to the president and vice president in our agenda meeting, as superintendent, it would make me feel more comfortable if there was some type of board decision. So if, if we say we're not going to do it, or we are going to do it, if we're not going to do it, because I worry as a superintendent that a year from now, somebody could come back and just say, well, you unilaterally as a superintendent decided not to take that money. And so it's a pretty big decision, so this is something I would really like to get some board feedback on on the 24th. They won't, they can't extend it much further than November thirtieth because the dollars have to be allocated by December thirty-first. So it's, it's really tight. Like, they got to get all the applications and they got to go through all the applications. And then they got to figure out, okay, we got this much money, we have this many people apply, so this is how much everybody's getting. And they, I don't, I just don't think they can delay the deadline past November thirtieth and get that done in time to do the notifications by December thirty-first. So I really think November thirtieth is going to be the firm deadline, and hopefully we'll know more by the 24th.
So I have a question on the presentation that Trune offered. When they talked about the language being vague, did they suggest any solutions? Did they say this is going to, it's going to have to be litigated to really determine how things are going to be?
That's pretty much what they, they...
Pretty much what they said.
Yeah, they'd said, you know, tell you, if you go to the courts, you don't know. Who can, someone's going to have to, yeah, basically fight it, litigate it to find out where, where the boundaries really are. And that, that's why I think the vague part was just very just, it was troublesome that they wouldn't give us answers. You know, there were no answers in there. Like I said, three students, what, like I said, a bus, you know, a fight in a hallway, what is it? There was, it was not vague enough. They, they, they just, you couldn't tell, tell, like you said, it's litigated or...
Yeah, well, yeah, three kids colliding, playing soccer on the playground, three kids going flying off the merry-go-round at the same time. That's a mass casualty if they all get hurt. Trune has a resolution that we could pass, and they baked some guardrails into their resolution. But my concern is, what makes them think their resolution trumps state legislation? And so, yes, you'd like to think that, hey, we as a board said this, but until somebody takes it to court, I, I, I trust Trune, and Trune's a great law firm, but I, I didn't feel confident. I don't know if Kevin and Pam had thoughts on that, but I just don't know that their resolution, I don't know why it would supersede the state law, so.
Did you, did a copy of the resolution that you sent to us?
No, but for a small fee, about like a hundred and fifty dollars, I can get it.
Yeah, they didn't, they, did they have it even on the presentation?
But I do want to tell you, I did get an email, and I think they sent me the recording. So you're welcome. I can send you the recording if anybody wants to hear that webinar that we went to. The only thing I would say again is, we're still waiting to see if that language is going to change. But if you want to hear where it stands right now, shoot me an email, and I'm pretty sure I could send you the link to the recording.
Yeah, that's definitely something I would be interested in. And one of the things that, as I was reading through, you know, what was available on the .gov website, I mean, there wasn't really anything that raised alarm bells for me. I really struggled to think, because they, they increased the allotted amount by, what, fifty percent this year compared to past years with the adjustment?
I don't think it's that high, but it's, it went up. I know at-risk went up, but this is different than the at-risk dollar, so.
Yeah, and that was kind of the other thing. I look at SETSEG, you know, insurance companies are very risk adverse. And if they don't see, you know, significant exposure to risk with it, you know, I think that, that kind of speaks to me. And, you know, I, I really struggle with having the ability to get funds from the state and turning those down because there's sort of these open-ended questions, I think. You know, that's a, that's a risk that we should probably take regardless of what immunity looks like, what level of liability on a personal level. I think there's, you know, if we thought that was a concern, there's policies out there that protect, you know, administrations. I think that's probably included in SETSEG, if there is any implication for the board, things that we can look like or look at. But there were some, like, specific things outlined, like a full assessment of the security that we have in place, plus the procedures that we have. An opportunity to have, I think, officers, if we wanted officers on campus. That was something that that would, that, that would be an eligible expense. There's also several things in the bond proposal that we could cover with those dollars as opposed to going to the, going to the community for. Because we may or may not, you know, get, get that bond passed if we choose to move in that direction. So I recognize there may be some liability exposure, but at the end of the day, my feeling is, we don't turn that down. We accept the liability for ourselves and for the administration. We make sure our kids are safe.
There was, and if, if you go through it, a lot of alarm bells. Not like five or six, I mean dozens. And all of us stand to be liable on a personal basis, which I thought was somewhat alarming.
Can you give me an example of where, because I would be on a bus, I would be...
I think it'd be valuable for us to review the recording and, and we can speak to it at our next meeting.
Because that's, that's how, if you voted for it.
Yes.
If, if we do it, if we accept those funds, we are agreeing to waive that attorney-client privilege. And their suggestion was that each of us as board members should hire our own personal attorney.
One of the things that they talked about too is...
If I'm not in the event, why would I have to hire an attorney?
Because you're the board.
You are the district.
Yeah, you are.
What I'm saying, I'll wait, I didn't know about the event, so I'll waive my attorney-client privilege. I don't even know what happens. Like, I mean, I'm not going to talk to a client, attorney about something I don't know, so.
Yeah, I think, so where I think the last board got into some trouble, which precipitated a lot of this, is it wasn't the actual event or how the event was handled, it's how the event was investigated and how it was communicated out. And I think that's where the board was kind of held somewhat liable. One of the things too that I think they kind of hit on with this is the fact that, let's say the district does get sued, there's going to be discussions with our attorney on how to proceed, right? Like, that's a big part of when you get sued, you want to have conversations with your attorney on strategy. Like, these are the court cases we're going to cite, this is the whatever. Well, if you have to waive immunity, your opponent, who's ever suing you, is going to get to see your entire strategy before you step one foot into court, which will put the district in a very big disadvantage. So it's things like that that you don't really think about. But again, I don't think there's anybody, if we had a catastrophic event, I'd welcome anybody who would come in. And, you know, the FBI has a great group that does, you know, when there's like that shooting in Las Vegas and things like that. Anybody who can come in and tell us, you know, how do we do, what can we do better, all those things. But I just think that this, this vulnerability to litigation is concerning. So I'm happy to share that. It's an hour and ten minutes, maybe, hour and fifteen minutes. Review it for yourself. And again, I, hopefully, I think that that's the, one of the things that really concerns us is what's a mass casualty event? If they can change the definition of the mass casualty event to something truly a mass casualty, like a shooting, okay, bring everybody in. But don't say that three kids getting in a fight in the parking lot is a mass casualty event. I think that's where it gets a little dicey for folks.
Would you leave that link in our, the update email?
Sure. Today's Monday. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the clock to see what day it is. I'm getting old. Sorry. Sooner is what I was thinking. I, I don't want to wait the whole week. I'll try to send it tonight or tomorrow. So, yeah, it, it's a good watch, but again, keep in mind, we're hopeful that a lot of those negative things will go away. I'm still hopeful that they can clean up some of this language, because I'd like to access those dollars too. Keep going on. Yep, so discussion about the potential bond proposal. So we had a bond information night, and we had some new faces that I hadn't seen at any of our other informational nights. We had some faces that I have seen at previous information nights. I thought it went really well. I thought, you know, we got through a lot of talking points. I, I thought that, you know, we, we got some great feedback. You know, I had a chance to process it and digest it and talk with Kevin a little bit, who was there, and Troy, who was there, and Gary was there that evening, and we just kind of talked about, you know, what we saw and what we heard. And for those of us who've been in these meetings before, I think our biggest concern is, this is what we've seen before. So coming out of that meeting, we just didn't feel like anything's changed. So I was hoping to get new information, and I don't think I got new information. I think we got the same information. I think we have to really be reflective on the fact that there was a small contingent of non-support for a bond, but that's what it's always been at those meetings. But then at the poll, at the ballot box, there's clearly a lot of folks in this community who are not interested in a bond right now. And so I don't think it would be a really good way to reflect on what happened, to say, wow, there's way more people there that night who wanted it than who don't. I agree, but it's always been that way. But the vote's always been something different. And, you know, I, I went into it thinking, okay, I'm going to present. It's a scaled-down bond proposal. It's a list of, and I brought it with me and I brought copies in case, I think everybody who's here was at the other meeting, so everybody's already seen my list, but I, it's a list of what we need for our building. So scaled down, focused on needs and academics, we can lower your millage rate. You know, all those top-selling points. You know, I had someone in attendance say, you know, you're up there selling this like your life depended on it. And to me, that was a huge compliment, because personally, there's nothing for me to gain by this except for my home value going up. I mean, my daughter's going to be gone before the work goes in. I don't get paid extra if we pass a bond, none of that. So to me, I was very thrilled that my passion for doing what I think is best for our kids and our community really is coming through in these meetings. But I didn't change anybody's heart or mind that night. I don't think anybody who walked in feeling like, I can't support this, left feeling, well, now I can support it. And that concerns me. I worry about voter fatigue. I mean, I don't think you can just keep going back every election cycle and saying, let's try again, let's try again, let's try again. I think it gets to a point where it's disrespectful to your community. I worry that there's a lot of, even scaled down, there are things on here that people would say, do we really need to expand the ECC, for example? Well, if we didn't expand the ECC, then yes, you might get some non-supporters to vote yes, but you're going to get an awful lot of yes voters to vote no. And I just don't see a proposal that I think is going to change enough votes. And I worry even with some of the, on this board, I think there's some differences of opinions, which is fine. It's okay to have differences of opinions. But I don't want to create, you know, sort of dissension on the board, like, to the point where, okay, I can't support this. And the other thing you don't want to do is, you don't want to have a proposal that passes the board by a vote of four-three or five-two, because you're just telling your community, look, that board member doesn't even support it, that board member. And it, it will fail. It'll die on the vine. It's just my experience. So I guess I'm just worried that I thought we had something, that I thought people could kind of rally behind, the scaled down, the focused on needs, the focus on academics, the reducing the, the millage rate. And I, I just don't think it would sway people. And I think we still have the same struggle we would to get the information out. Now, we can send postcards out, but you can't put the whole bond on a postcard. What the postcard's going to do is it's going to say, for more information, scan this QR code or go to this link. Well, the problem is, we posted it all over Facebook and social media last time. And if people didn't want to go last time to find the information, they're not going to go this time because it came to them in a postcard instead of on social media, I don't think. So just, I, I don't want to put the community in a spot where it's like, we're constantly doing this. We don't want that negative out there. I think it's not healthy for the district. So I'm bringing it back to you. I know you asked me to move forward and pursue it. I feel like we've kind of moved forward to pursue it. I would like some feedback with this information on whether or not now's the right time, maybe a year from now is the right time. Maybe this isn't the right time, maybe it's a year from now. Maybe it's two years. So that's a lot.
Yeah, so I was, I attended the meeting. It was, it was a good meeting. There was a lot of positive feedback, a lot of participation. There was negative feedback too. So we, we got a lot of perspective, I think, from different viewpoints within our community. So one of the things that I kind of walked away with was several people asking for data. So data to support what the, what, what the requests were. There were things that, within the proposal, you know, what we presented, that had support, that didn't have support. And then my kind of feeling was, it sounds like in the past, we just put a group of community members together and said, okay, what, what do you want? Where do we go with this? And I think there's probably appetite for a little more direction from the administration, from the board. So I think if we did do this, we should compile data, provide that to the community, and really focus as we have conversation on what the data is. That, so that was one takeaway that I had. Now, if we decide that we're not going to move forward, I think even more, we should really look at the thirty-one AA funding. There were specific lying items in the high school, middle school, Oakwood, Evergreen, the administrative buildings, transportation, and maintenance buildings. So there's some gaps that we can close in terms of security with thirty-one AA. So kind of step back to my support of that. The other thing, I, I see that, you know, with the ECC, what's really driving that is the Great Start Readiness Program, which is, from my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's sort of a charter outside of, you know, the, the normal K through twelve that we have here. We don't have, like, influence over the curriculum. From what I understand, we're not really following the, the tuition scale that's provided by the state and providing that need-based prioritization. So if we don't move forward with the bond, and, and I wouldn't support the expansion to the ECC anyway, because I think we're, we're taking funds from K through twelve and directing them toward the Great, Great Start Readiness Program. But I, I really think we need to look at, with the expansion of that, has that been disruptive to our elementary students? And does it make sense to, to sort of pare that, that back to the space that we have available for pre-K and for school?
So you, you mentioned a couple of things. We didn't just throw people in a room and ask them to put their ideas on the board. We did two facility assessments, both internally and with an external contract management team. Went through all of our facilities, all of our HVAC, all of our roofing, all of our... And they came up with some infrastructure needs. Then we met with multiple, multiple stakeholder groups. We've talked about this before. Teachers and administrators and coaches and bus drivers and community members. Everybody gave us their ideas on their list. So the list that we came up with was extremely focused on what people within the district and outside the district were suggesting we needed, as well as experts in our facilities and facilities. So that's one thing I wish we could get clear, is that we put a ton of effort, a ton of time, a ton of personal nighttime into getting that information. And so when I keep hearing we didn't do that, it's an insult to me, it's an insult to Kevin, it's an insult to Josh, it's an insult to Gary, it's an insult to Troy. We put a ton of our personal time into this to get the information that you keep claiming we didn't get. That's an insult, so please don't do that anymore. The other thing I would tell you, you asked about tuition. I don't understand what tuition for GSRP we're not following. There's a tuition guideline that says you first enroll up to four-hundred percent of the poverty line. Is that what you're referring to? Once you reach that...
Well, you prioritize based on the actual need.
You enroll them first, but you don't stop. They tell you, don't stop. They want us to enroll every four-year-old. They could be a thousand percent of the poverty line, and they're eligible for GSRP.
Yes.
All that four-hundred percent is, is the priority line. So it's not like we're ignoring the state guidance. We're following the state guidelines to a T. We're just, we have the capacity to go beyond that, as I'm sure Coopersville does. They have almost the same number of GSRP that we do. have almost the same number of GSRP that we do as Hudsonville and all the others. So, I just wanna clarify those things, 'cause I, I think it's important.
I have a question to follow up on, the numbers, they seem to go higher.
Numbers of-
Of four-year-olds, they shut them, they shut them down a lot earlier than we do, correct?
I don't believe so. I think most of them will take whoever they can get, as long as they have the room for-
I've seen Jensen pulls out, like, way early in August.
Well, they may not have the, the space, I mean, they, I'm, Jensen's probably gonna pass a bond and build more classrooms, and Zeeland just passed a hundred and ten million dollars, and some of that will go for early childhood. So, we just happen to have some space, not in our ECC, which would be ideal, but we house them in Evergreen, we're fortunate to have that space. But, no one's capping it because they don't want anymore. We keep kids in our program because of our GSRP. I firmly believe that. We have ten students this year who are in GSRP, who don't live in our community, but their older siblings are in our older grades, and so I believe those ten will stay with us. So, again, I, we're not losing money on it, we get more money from the state than it costs us to run the program, so it's self-sustaining. Yes, they use the creative curriculum, it's a, it's a research-based curriculum that's used throughout the country for early childhood development. Yeah, there's a tremendous amount of support in Ottawa County, I think they do a great job with training of GSRP staff and monthly meetings for our administrators, and it's a solid program.
So, maybe I misunderstood, 'cause we had a conversation after that meeting, and so I thought that I, I sorta asked a direct pointed question about pairing this list down, providing the data, giving the community the perspective of the board on these are our specific needs. I meant no, you know, no disrespect or insult toward the investment of time that others made in the other bond. You know, I, I know that was valuable, and I know a lot, a lot of people in this room put a lot into it, but a lot more people outside of this room. I just, from my perspective, from being in that meeting, and I attended the bond meetings for the last bond, the last two bonds, the informational meetings, I think if we were gonna move forward, that's something that I heard from the community. And I may, I may have misheard from the community, but that's what I heard, so that's when I approached you, and the way I understood your response was, the board, or the community will not pass this if we give them specific direction, the board will not pass this if we exclude an ECC expansion.
I think-
So, no disrespect.
Yeah, I think the community would push back if they thought the board sat here and made all the decisions without their input. I absolutely said that, yeah.
Well, that's not what I was suggesting, I think, we both know that.
So, can you clarify what data you're looking for? I guess that confuses me.
So, you keep referencing all of these surveys that you've done, how you compiled the data, you put that together, that drove the decisions, but in, in the informational meetings, I didn't see any of that. I didn't see, you know, the results from the, you know, the staff or the community.
Well, I shared the, we did one survey, got about a thousand responses, and I did share that data the second go-round when I had my information-
Very late in the process.
As soon as we had informational meetings.
Before we set up the second bond, we went through that.
Okay, so it was the second bond that we collected this information?
Yeah, the data, the survey data.
First one failed, we got roughly a thousand survey responses from the community, from teachers, from every, from whoever would do it, 'cause everybody's welcome to do it. We went through those responses and looked at what, where people thought the bond, what they didn't vote for, they did vote for. And it was very, it was kind of the middle of the road. Everything was middle of the road.
Well, and I would say, Brandon, as I'm sure you're aware, some data is quantitative, like a survey, and some data is qualitative. And a lot of what we have is qualitative data, and qualitative data is me standing in front of folks saying, I met with our coaches, and this is what our coaches asked me for, here's their list, I've got emails from coaches, I've got, it's qualitative data. And so, most of what we did is qualitative data. If we wanted quantitative data, as I've mentioned to the board, we can try to spend twenty thousand dollars and have somebody go Epic MRA, go out and do a survey, that would be quantitative data. But we, we have data, that's why I'm a little confused what data you want, 'cause I'm thinking, well, we're talking a lot about buildings and old roofs and what's that, I mean, do they wanna know exactly, like, the high school roof is twenty-plus years old, or do they want, is that, when you say data, I just don't understand what data they're looking for.
What's the useful life of that roof? I mean, I'm curious, it's twenty years old, but is it a fifty-year-old roof, or is it a fifty-year warranted roof?
I don't think anybody would suggest ever replacing that.
Well, I, I get that, but we're not roofing specialists, so that would be a very specific thing, let's go and talk to an expert, collect that qualitative data and share it.
But we did.
But did you share it?
Yeah, so trying, yes, that is what preempted any of the conversations that even started with, these are the things that the professionals are actually suggesting. So, Triangle went with Gary and others and did a building needs assessment, everything. They created, it's not, I mean, if you want PDFs or documents, I mean, that's what they created and said, here is the long list of things that we see, and here are the priorities, and here are the costs potentially of those. Those are the things that then built the foundation for even coming up with any sort of number, and then having to come up with prioritizing, okay, we can't, if we're gonna ask for it all, this is what it's gonna be, if there are things that we can do internally, what can we do, et cetera. So, that's, that initial data or information is what first formulated the first bond. And so, there was a lot of professionals involved.
And I think-
I think what he's saying is, let's see, let us see though that data.
And the community.
Well, we did, that's what we presented at the meetings, that, the, this is the data, right, here's the data. This is what, this is what Triangle said to us, you need to replace these things, these are the aged things, these are the things wearing out, there are things that they saw that don't, didn't make the list, this is the data, this is their report. They went through every building, building by building, and said, these are the things that need addressing. So, I, I don't know what other data to show you.
There was probably a missed opportunity in the meeting then to share that, because there were, I don't know if they're data analytic specialists, but they specifically asked for data and, you know, basically needs-based. So, may, maybe we missed an opportunity there.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't necessarily, I tried to go through it in a time we met, or I mentioned the first go-rounds and how we, and I mentioned we had people who came through and whatever, but yeah, we didn't go as, we didn't go as deep as we would go if we had a proposal.
Right.
That was provided to the-
Every person who walked in that night.
So, that, that's sort of the next piece, I think, you know, from what I understand, and Scott can confirm, we have maybe four million dollars or so in our capital fund, and we have, you know, immediate needs, potentially four roofs, if you're saying Triangle said this needs to be replaced, maybe they said this needs to be replaced in six months, or you're gonna have a leak and you're gonna damage this equipment. Well, we have the resources to address those things, and if we're not gonna move forward with a bond, then I think we should look, we should take that information and say, okay, what is the useful life of this? And, and address the needs that we have.
I pointed it out in my weekly update, sent the list of things we need to do. You just have to be mindful, Brandon, it took us eight years, eight years of setting aside what we could set aside to get to four million dollars. So, if we spend all that to fix roofs and whatever, and something else breaks and you don't have that four million dollars, I mean, we, we're not a business, we can't take out the business loans, we can't whatever. So, I understand what you're saying, and you're right, that's exactly what we'd have to do if we don't go for a bond, is we, okay, can't have kids getting rained on, and we can't have computers getting leaked on, and so, but again, with the tough decisions you make now is, do we continue to patch that old roof, or can we replace this roof completely and ignore this, you know what I mean? So, those are the tough decisions that have to be made, but I would caution the board, don't spend that whole four million dollars, Josh has been here and Pam's been here, when that money did not exist. So, we have to be very careful with-
How we deploy it.
How we deploy it, because-
I believe after the second bond failed, you gave us a list of priority things that needed-
Yeah, and we've addressed some of them already, we took three or four of them off the list already.
It's not like we're not doing things or doing this.
Right, so I think that's the, that's sort of the next conversation, if we, if we decide we're not gonna go for a bond.
Right.
And I did ask the OAISD to, to help me benchmark capital reserves for different schools within Ottawa County, so I'm just waiting for that information to come back. I think that's what I had on the bond. Short and sweet, right?
You know, some of that, some of that data is in the audit, that, that they, that they, that we had done, they actually benchmarked Allendale to other districts. I don't know if the capital, one was in there, but I know the fund balance was in there. The fund balance was in there, there were, there were a handful of things that were in that audit, if you look, I think it's more towards the back, I know there's a lot there. But they did benchmark Allendale against other Ottawa County school districts.
Okay, I just, I think maybe there's an opportunity, we can package that information and get it specifically to the community, community members who are requesting that. That's it?
I think there's, I wanna, I got a couple of comments, Kevin. I think, as far as the bond goes, there's a large misconception still in our community about the connection between housing growth and the amount of dollars that we capture as a school. And the fact that Allendale continues to be a bedroom community with very limited industrial tax revenue supply, especially in comparison to our neighbors, all of our adjacent neighbors have a significant tax revenue from industrial and commercial property. Allendale's, does, Allendale does not have that, and the continuing misconception is the little dollar amount that the school actu- acts, actually captures from each individual home being added into our community. The biggest growth that we could actually have by those homes is our per-pupil allowance of all of the people who bought homes in Allendale, sent their kids to Allendale, that would actually help our funds out more than what the actual tax from the home being built in the community. So, I think some continued tax educational in, information document that says, listen, if we add a hundred homes into Allendale, this is what we will be, stand to gain. If two large major businesses decided to come in and put up huge buildings somehow in our community, if the planning commission would ever allow such a thing, then we could actually see significant tax increase to our, our revenue. So, that, that's one thing. The other thing is, being a forty-six-year Allendale community member, we are, there's a significant group of people that are just not wanting change to occur, and so they will, just for the sake of being against anything changing, vote against it. And so, for me, that just is significantly lacking in vision for our future generations. So, when I think about the ECC, doesn't have anything to do with which program is taking up which space, it has to do with, are we planning and building for the future? And the answer to that question's no. So, which, what can we do to build and plan for the future that would actually draw people in to create those things versus going, that we only have X amount of people, and so we're gonna stay at this level just to support them, and that's the, if you build it, they will come, or vice versa of that, we're gonna just let our medium be medium and stay there to support what we have, and that's it. I would rather see us continue to move in the opposite direction of that and say, no, we're gonna get out on the forefront, so we need to make these adjustments now in order to accommodate for that growth in the future. That, to me, is being strategic about our growth, we can still optimize and be efficient with our, with our funding, but we need to make these choices now that will help set us up for our future, for our future growth, for the future community members, because we're not, we can't just continue to stay the size that we are. We are gonna grow, there are more people, they're gonna be faced with either, hey, okay, if Allendale's gonna let their buildings go downhill, then we are gonna go to another district, and therefore, the per-pupil allowance, again, going back to that, it's not the house that matters, it's the per-pupil allowance then really, and we're gonna start losing funding that way. So, again, I just feel like, it's almost like we're shooting ourselves in both feet by not doing this. So, I guess my hope is, is that we can still garner support. I'm all, I, hey, I would love to not pay my property taxes next year. That's a great, great idea, yep, I'll get on board with that, but what do we do next year when we need to do X, Y, and Z to our school buildings? And to that point, Brandon, about the four million dollars, when I came on, we did not have four million dollars. And so, I don't think, I mean, I more feel comfortable maybe spending twenty percent of that, maybe ten percent, but to say that we would spend fifty or sixty percent of that would not be very wise of us, because if something actually in emergency happens, then our cash is gone, and we can't just run out and go, hey, we're out of cash, gotta make a small business loan, and so then, again, so I just think, I wanna be wise, I wanna be a good steward, but I also wanna be visionary at the same time. So, thanks, those are my comments.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, the only thing that I would say to that is, you know, the, the previous board approved a land purchase for one-point-six million dollars out of that fund, and we have absolutely no vision for that right now that I'm aware of, 'cause none of the bond-
That property has gained value every day that we have owned it, and so that alone is visionary enough for me to say, because I know of three people personally that would have lost that property in a heartbeat and turned it again into another subdivision, which, once all that land, which is contiguous to our property is gone, it's gone. It's gone forever, we're not gonna go in there and clear a hundred houses to own that property again. So, I get it, we can't just say we're not spending any money, and so trying to be strategic, purchasing a contiguous piece of property to our property is a strategic purchase for future vision. So, yeah, we don't, and if we have to sell it in five years and double our money, then that's what has to happen, but again, that's being strategic.
Right, so there's your small business loan, and if we have roofs that are about to fail right now, then maybe that's, maybe that's, you know, an investment that we can consider leveraging without a bond. That's all I'm saying. So, we have immediate needs and we should address them.
So, did you get an answer?
No. And I really kinda need to-
Or an answer. I'm, I am, as much as I agree with Josh, you know, if you're standing still, you're going backwards, because all the other communities are investing in programs. And I think it's really changed in the last five years, since I've been on the board, from schools, getting kids ready for college, to getting kids ready for, 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 you know, the working world. I think it's changed a lot in the last five years, and we don't have those programs. That's part of the, partly what the bond was gonna do, it was gonna help set us up to get these kids ready for building, for vocational stuff instead of college. Without a bond, those things are just tough to do, we gotta fix the roads, we gotta, we gotta maintain our buildings, and that's the world we live in, in the way schools are financed and capital improvements are financed. But, I'm also agree with you, voter fatigue is real, right? People are just sick of hearing about it. So, I'm, I am of the thought, let's, let's give it a couple of years and see where we're at, and, you know, pay down, I don't know, I, I am of the, like I said, I don't like it, but I would wait a couple of years and see where we're at.
I've been waiting patiently, mostly 'cause I share, I mean, 'cause I share Josh's vision and stuff, and I fully agree with everything that both of you guys had said as far as what we want for the district. So, it is tough, because personally, I would support the bond, I would support the full athletic package, I would support all of it, because I think that it draws people here. because I think that it draws people here. It's not always necessarily the particular team, people are looking, um, at very young ages, at third and fourth grade now, at football programs and various things. So while I'm, like, I'm drawn toward the athletic route, like, obviously there's not a lot of support for it in the community. So, um, watching, you know, some of the comments on some of the news articles that had happened post the informational night, you know, Allendale may attempt the third bond or whatever, I think that that's helpful to kind of see what people are saying and kind of gauge where the community is, and I do think, um, like with what you're saying, Josh, there is such a veteran community here that I don't know whether, um, it's necessarily change, or it's just like, right now, there is a lot of fear over taxes. And the answer is, if they, if there's potentially any increase, even though it's not an immediate increase, any extra borrowing of money, the answer is just no, I think people are kind of done giving. So I don't even know if it's necessarily people don't want the school to have money, they just don't wanna spend any more money. So there's part of me that can appreciate that. Again, I, you know, obviously we wish we all had taxes lowered and things like that, but, um, we do need to fund the school. So, I think I agree with Kevin that maybe we need to lie low, um, but I also want it to be known that that's kind of a painful comment to make, because our kids are directly impacted by this. My kids are directly impacted by this, you know, so it would be very nice for them to have a future to look forward to of, you know, all of these different programs, specifically for the high school, specifically for entering into the workforce, um, to draw people into our community. I would want all of those things, um, but also, I'm not hearing from a lot of people that there's enough support for us to put that together. And I, and I do, I, I love all the data and all of the things too. My fear is we could share till we're blue in the face. I don't actually know that it would make a difference, what we shared, because I think it's just the climate that we live in right now. And if we're seeing, you know, if it's, if it's a tax thing, it's just a, a no to money. And we do live in a very conservative district that is of that response right now. So I think we need to kind of see how things pla- play out at the state and federal level and kind of let them even themselves out, um, before we ask again. Maybe, maybe the proof is in the pudding where we are doing, you know, what you're suggesting in terms of people say, we're not giving more money to the schools until they prove they're fiscally responsible. We can sit up here and say, we make decisions based on that, but over the next couple of years, if we truly have to strategize, where do we spend money, where do we not, where, I mean, that's proof that we're trying to be responsible with the dollars that we have. You know, we're not making, we're not saying, hey, we have four million dollars, you know what, that field house is getting built, that's what we're gonna do. You know, we're not doing things like that. So, that's, my opinion is to maybe wait a little bit.
And my last comment on this is I agree with pretty much everyone here. I would like the bond to pass, especially for athletics, 'cause that is a big thing in my family. However, the conservativeness in the community is big. But I think, like, the thing like Mira that we have in the, in the junior high, that starts showing, and kids are gonna be like, oh, I wanna come to that district and do that, and these other programs that, uh, Mr. Plain has in, um, instrumented, I think that will help, and then we can say, hey, the district grows, especially if we can get, like Josh says, the people per house. I think that will be the way to go, is to get these two programs up and running, and then hopefully more students we get, then we go back at it.
I have been around, literally involved in the schools for thirty-four years. I have seen a lot of changes in thirty-four years. I have never said no to a bond. I one hundred percent, uh, support students, schools, the community. As someone who has a real estate background, I can tell you that schools are the most important aspect of someone relocating here. They don't say, oh, hey, do you have a McDonald's, oh, you know, hey, do you have, have this or that. The schools and what they offer are the most important thing when someone's relocating. And I too would love to not pay my taxes, and I know, you know, I own a number of commercial buildings, so I quite honestly are paying a whole lot more in taxes than a lot of people are. And I still don't care, because it's important to me for the community, for the district, for the students. My kids are grown. I, every student deserves the very best that we can bring. And I don't necessarily buy the conservative district. Genesin is a conservative district, Zeeland's a conservative district, Hudsonville's a conservative district. They're all able to pass bonds. I think part of what I saw, especially the last go-around, was a very active group of people that went out and purposely tried to sabotage this bond effort. And I think that's very import, it's very important to recognize, and I think it's incredibly unfortunate that that happened. I think we all have to look at each other, and I think we all have to consider who's in the community and who's doing those types of things. And again, you know, when the information came out, I too saw a lot of social media. You know, I, I heard from some parents who, you know, were really disappointed that, that things were not gonna be passed, and that we didn't have the money for, and then I saw stuff from people who were like, put up portables, they were good enough for me. That's incredibly short-sighted, but we have so many people that apparently feel that way. Now, it personally breaks my heart, but I don't know that we're ready to push forward on another bond issue at this point. I want a successful bond passage, that's what I want. I want it for everybody. I may die in this community and I'll still be voting yes. It's that important to me. But we need to find out why that group of people took it upon themselves to run a negative campaign and to purposely sabotage our efforts. That to me is very important, and I think we need to know that before we move forward.
I would echo the voter fatigue, the fatigue, we obviously have lots of needs in our district, but it just seems like wisdom to wait even one year, like, let's maybe revisit it in one year. And, you know, give them a break, you know, and let them calm down, and maybe we'll have more success with just waiting one year.
So I think I have a direction now. I think what I would like to do is, we did have about thirteen people sign up to be on the steering committee, and several of the people who left their contact information. I would, uh, maybe say were some of the non-supporters or maybe concerned anyways. So I think what I will do is I will contact them, thank them for putting themselves out and offering themselves up, but also ask them to continue to think about, and talk to the people they know, and talk to the people that they associate with in Allendale, and what would they support? And what type of, what size of a bond, what type of activities? And maybe we can get some more data the next time, and a year from now, we can say, hey, these people who were willing to be on the steering committee went out, and that's how you could do a survey, right? That reaches a lot of the community, so. I think that's what we'll do, we'll put it off, maybe come back next year and just see. 'Cause we can always ask again next year, we don't have to, hey, where are we at? Do we feel now's the time, or do we need to wait another six months or another twelve months?
The millage, sorry, the millage decrease, does that change at all with us waiting a year or two years?
If it changes, well, I don't know, I, I would hazard a guess, I, 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 I'm not a financial guy. It won't be less, like, I don't think if we wait a year, suddenly we can only go down to eleven.
That's what I was wondering.
No, I don't, I don't think that's the case. Could it be lower? Possibly, but...
But it won't go the opposite wrong direction more than likely?
No, 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 it's not like you, you have to do it this year or you won't be able to reset that floor.
Okay.
I think when you pass the bond, you'd be able to reset the floor. And so, I, it could actually be more, maybe it's a mill and a half if we, you know, go down to ten and a half. So, I, I don't believe, I, I wouldn't wanna guess at what the actual number is, but...
At some point, I mean, if we do wait, it sounds like we are, I mean, we're gonna have to start over from square one, right? At some point?
Yeah, you'd wanna redo a facilities assessment, because something that, like, right now seems mid-urgent might be very urgent. So like, okay, we had prioritized this over this, but this is actually stabilized, or maybe we addressed this through the, um, fund balance, through the capital projects fund, excuse me. So we addressed this, now this becomes a priority, so yes, you'd have to...
At some point, you, I mean, we can't just keep going off data from two years.
No, no, you'd wanna go through and do a whole nother facilities assessment, and whether, you know, you bring in a different construction management team and get fresh eyes to see what they see, and, yeah. So, yeah, you would kinda start over.
We'd have to decide if we're gonna wait a year or two, or...
Well, and additionally, we need new quotes.
Yeah, exactly.
Because, you know, the numbers we have quite clearly are not gonna cover it, I mean...
Yeah, that's the other problem with waiting, is that construction costs are only going up.
Right.
Yeah, but sometimes you sell those bonds and you put the money in the bank and you earn interest on the bonds that you sold too. So there's a lot of moving parts there. Okay, thank you for that direction. Sorry, that was a little somber, this is a little somber as well, I just wanted to give the board a heads up. Most of you know I have four older sisters, my youngest was dealing with Parkinson's and MS for about a decade, and she passed this weekend. She lives in Minnesota, that's the reason I'm bringing it up, there's a good chance I may have to be out for a couple of days, I don't know yet. But I just wanted to give you a heads up in case suddenly I send you an email and go, hey, I'm out of state for the next couple of days. Good news is, our district office is full of people like Mr. Vanderloom, Mr. Tornell, Mr. Mulder, Mrs. Voss, who can carry on in my absence. But, just wanted to give you that heads up, 'cause I don't actually know what's gonna happen yet. She, she was very, uh, active in her church there, which is good, 'cause, um, you know, being strong in her faith helped get her through this. So she may want to have a ceremony there, or they, you know, her family's here, so they may come back here and then I wouldn't have to miss, so. Just wanted to give you that quick heads up.
I'm sorry for your loss.
That's okay, thanks. No more pain.
All right. Onto board comments, Anna, who will start with you?
No comments really, except for your loss.
I know.
Sorry for your loss.
No additional comments. Again, it's always great to see students recognized, I love that, I love when they come in and they're recognized for an award, whether it's academic or athletic, it's just great to see them, the smiles on their faces, the pride that they feel in the district, and so, that's wonderful.
Thank you, Pam. Josh.
Yeah, Garth, sorry for your loss, or your sister. Thank you, Audra, for all the work that you're doing for the event tomorrow and recognizing our veterans and holding a local ceremony. Appreciate you doing that, I know that's a, you don't have to do that, you choose to do that, so thank you for choosing to do that. For all of the athletes and connections to, um, you know, just, actually, one of the recipients is the son of someone I graduated the high school with, and so they're still in the community and their kids are going here, so that's really cool to see. But then just seeing the, you know, Colby getting that first-time award too for Allendale soccer program, getting recognized, and actually I work with, uh, one, uh, a coach of another district who has had to play against us and, uh, does not like doing that any longer, so that's really cool to see too. So just congratulations to our fall athletes that have excelled, that's it.
Yeah, uh, sorry about your loss, and really encourage you to, if you need to, to take the time to be with your family and, and, um, just for your, for your own, um, mental health and working through that, so, yeah, I'm sorry to hear that. Echo what Josh said, it's so cool, and, and Pam and everybody, it's so cool to see our athletes be honored and just all that they're accomplishing, so, um, I, I really enjoy that too, so, that was, uh, that was great. Also echo Josh on, um, the assembly for the veterans and everybody who's put an effort into that. Sounds like, uh, a really good, uh, a good program, so I will, uh, either attend in person or, uh, or make sure that I catch the live stream, so, that's really good stuff. And, yeah, a lot of, a lot of good conversation, and appreciate everybody hanging in, hanging in there with me while I ask many, many questions, so, that's it.
Again, I'm really sorry for your loss, Garth, that's really hard. So, I appreciate you sharing that with us, and it's even harder to share it in a public setting like this, so, um, my condolences to you and to your family. Same thing, fall, a great wrap-up to fall athletic season, a great kickoff to winter, um, is coming up, so I look forward to that. And I just, I do appreciate the discussion tonight, I know there's been a lot of hard topics and discussion, but very, um, lots of conversation from a lot of us, so I appreciate everyone's opinions and discussion on that too.
All right, um, President Kamen, um, Audra, thank you for all your hard work on the veterans, um, and facilitating that and getting our kids engaged. And thank you to our veterans, without them, yeah, where would we be? Sparts is awesome, I think we had re, all conference, I think we had a pretty good handful of all conference. You know, we had, it's, it's a tribute to our coaches, our administration, and our youth programs, so, congratulations to them. And yeah, we have a meeting on the twenty-fourth. You said we have a fairer amount of stuff.
Well, for sure, we'll wanna talk about thirty-one AA, I, I know that, um, not much else beyond that at this point.
Okay. I know I, I, I read some articles on thirty-one AA, there is a few out there, so, if you start looking, there's stuff out there. And it's kinda mixed, there's, there's some school districts that are like, we'll take the risk, there's also some that say it's not worth it. I think it seems to be kinda split down, I would say down the middle, but I'd say a third, two-thirds, you know, a third of the people are saying we'll take the risk, so. Any information, as soon as you get it, it'd be nice to have, that we can keep, keep digging into this. I think that is, 'cause I, I kinda agree with Brandon, it's a lot of money. They kinda gave us kind of a number roughly, if everybody took it right now, what it would be. You care if I share that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, it was, if everybody took the, took the money, it's about a hundred and forty dollars a student would be the, would be the payout. Now, because there's a lump sum of money, every person, every school district doesn't take it, the people that do get more. So it's, you know, in our school district, it's about three hundred thousand, it's about what we would receive if everybody took it, so. I agree with you, Brandon, it's, it's, it is a substantial amount of money, and I was talking about a bond, and asking the community for money, and, you know, I wouldn't wanna turn it down, but any information would be good to keep in front of us and that we can keep discussing and thinking about it and reading it. Like I said, there's a lot out there, so don't be afraid to look around. So, we will move on to action items. Can I get a motion for the purchase of IA iPads?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of a hundred and thirty iPads at a total cost of forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Support.
Motion by Anna, support by Pam.
Yeah, Mr. Mulder presented at our work session, so in two thousand seventeen, we provided iPads to our KDA art, KDA art, KDA eight art classrooms in support of their curriculum. These are fifth generation, no longer can be updated, making it impossible to get updated apps, um, and to create a security challenge. And so, through the REMC bid, which is the state bid site, we can purchase, uh, them in ten packs, and we'd need to order thirteen, ten packs of iPads.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions? Amy, it's a roll call vote.
Raimi?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Therkettle?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Paul Steig?
Yes. Motion pass. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase of Chromebooks?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of five hundred and seventy-five Chromebooks for a total cost of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and fifty cents.
Support.
Motion by Pam, support by... Motion by Pam, support by Anna. Dr. Cooper?
Yep, so, in 2021, we purchased Chromebooks for our middle school students, they typically have a life span in schools of three to four years. We're at four and a half years on those now, and the battery life is what usually goes first, and it's really hard to do the diagnostic tests, 'cause the batteries just don't last throughout the testing period, so. Going again through the REMC bid, we were able to purchase Chromebooks and Google license for each of them, a total of two hundred and sixty-four seventy per unit, and we're looking to purchase five hundred and seventy-five Chromebooks.
Any questions or discussion? Amy, you have our roll call vote, please.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Thirrkettle?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Paulsteg?
Yes.
Raimi?
Yes.
Motion pass. Can I have a motion to approve the board policy updates?
Motion to approve changes, additions to the board policies listed above as presented.
Support?
Motion by Pam, support by Anna.
Okay, run through these quickly, but please, if you have any questions, let me know. The first ones, fourteen twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-two, and forty-one twenty-two, these are replacement policies, and what they did is they took several policies and condensed them down into one, and so, these three replacement policies give us an opportunity to rescind fourteen twenty-two oh-two, thirty-one twenty-two oh-two, forty-one twenty-two oh-two, sixteen sixty-two, thirty-three sixty-two, and forty-three sixty-two. So, those six policies can be removed, the, the policy standards are incorporated into the first three that I listed. I also wanted to mention in this, 'cause Josh had asked a question at the work session about bullying and the definition of bullying, and so if you look at fourteen twenty-two, which is that first policy, and on the second page at the top, it talks about bullying, and it says bullying means any unwanted and repeated, repeated, so that's where the word repeated shows up in this policy, it also shows up in policy forty-one twenty-two. If you look at policies sixteen sixty-two, thirty-three sixty-two, forty-three sixty-two, and fifty-five seventeen, the definition for, for bullying there, and it talks about how, when it rises to the level of harassment, and then it talks about systematically and chronically, so you get those words that basically are repeatedly, and so it shows up again in policy there. And then, the other thing is, I would say, is that if you look at policy fifty-six ten, it doesn't give a definition of bullying, but it talks about restorative practices should be the first consideration to remediate offenses such as interpersonal conflicts and bullying. And so, when you take the totality of that, what they're saying is that for, you know, i- if someone says, hey, you called my son fat, that's bullying, you're bullying him, well, in a way it is, but it's also mean behavior. So, yes, it can be categorized as bullying, but when we're talking about bullying of significance that rises to the level of harassment, that's where this idea of repeatedly comes into play. I think some of what led this sort of looser definition of bullying, so it could be just one offense, is that cyberbullying. So, cyberbullying is very pervasive and it's very, you know, hurtful, and it's hard to put the genie back in the bottle, because, you know, you call somebody a name, it kind of eventually dissipates into the wind, you put something on social media and it lives forever. And so, I think they kind of loosened up that idea that bullying could be a single event, but even in the case where bullying could be a single event, if you look at some of the other language, it says specifically to be truly bullying, it has to significantly impact the learning environment. So, you know, you call somebody a mean name, it's hurtful, but it doesn't necessarily impact their learning, and it has to keep them from being able to learn, and it has to be so significant that the child doesn't wanna come back to school and whatever. So, I'm not trying to discount bullying, 'cause bullying shouldn't happen, mean behavior shouldn't happen, but there is a little bit of a difference between bullying as a, you know, mean behavior and bullying as a repeated type of harassment. And so, this is good conversation to have, we have an admin meeting on Thursday, it's something I'll discuss again with our admin team, hey, let's be cognizant that a one-time thing is kind of bullying, so, if a parent says to you, they bullied my child, well, kind of, it was a mean-spirited kind of bullying, so we don't wanna discount that, but we also have to understand that there are some thresholds if it elevates. And again, the, the policy and the law itself, this comes from the state school board code says, the first thing you do for bullying is a restorative practice, which, you know, doesn't mean suspension, doesn't mean expulsion, things like that, it means you sit down and have a conversation, so. So, I wanted to point that out, so that's, that's those first three policies, I don't know if anybody had any questions on those replacement policies? And fourteen twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-two, and forty-one twenty-two?
So, the only thing I have here is, we still have, sort of, we define within our board policies, the, the, the sex-protected class, and there's just, I've, I've benchmarked other districts, we specifically call out sexual orientation and gender identity, Genesee, or I'm sorry, Kennewah Hills calls out sexual orienta- orientation, gender identity, gender expression, a couple other schools that I benchmark, they have a different list, and they should all be covered under the legal definition of sex, and we know, back in, you know, last year, all the issues that, that kinda swirled around with that, and I would like to see us just go back to taking out what's included in the parentheses, we don't need to define that ourselves, because it's being defined within state or federal, really federal laws, and we're gonna, we should align with those, and that conversation's probably not over, because there will be changes in administrations and, you know, so we may see that change and we may see, we may not. I also looked at Byron Center, there was a lot of controversy in September of last year, as they adopted the, the required language from the Biden administration, they've since moved back to the twenty-twenty language that they used that, that preceded that adoption. I just think there's an opportunity for us to just remove that explicit language as a protected class in our board policies and just align with the law, whatever the law is, so. I would like to see Neola update all of their policies, and I think from my perspective too, what we have here doesn't align with federal law, so, but...
Can you say specifically in, in the policy where it is, so I know what to ask them about?
Yeah, so, on, it's pretty much every, every time that sex is referenced, we have in parentheses explicitly stating specific classes that aren't traditionally covered because of the current definition of sex, so, the first one in fourteen twenty-two, which we're kinda talking about, is right in the first paragraph and actually the first sentence, and that, that follows through and it's consistent all the way through all of our policies. I also saw Genesee and West Ottawa, it looked like, and I'm not sure when they did, but they're using Trune now for their board policies, so, maybe there's an opportunity to look at other vendors and, and, you know, maybe, maybe talk with Coleman as well, so. So, that's something that I, I would like to see, I think it makes sense. I don't know that we need to audit the entire manual for policies, but as we touch these, I think it makes sense to update those. So, that's my perspective on that.
So, are you asking for what is in the parentheses to just be removed?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's it. We should have a respectful learning environment regardless, you know, gender expression was another one, that kinda what Hills calls out, there's other districts that have that, that what's in parentheses is expanded through Neola, and there are others that just don't have that reference at all and follow whatever the legal definition of sex is at the time, which is what I think makes sense for us.
So, with this meeting on the agenda for a vote, to make that change, we would either need to post, ask to postpone this and have it voted on for Dr. Cooper to get more information, or we'd have to recommend that change by a motion and vote on that, correct? Josh, I'm asking you, right, if you're, if you're asking for a change?
Uh, someone could make a recommendation or a motion to adjust it right now, and they'd have to get support, and then we can potentially vote on that, or we can vote on what's presented, and then, 'cause we're a little branded, it's running up as something else that probably has more discussion along with it, but probably need to be united with either Neola or Trune or somebody else, so my suggestion is, is to not make that right now.
Right, so maybe postpone that.
And to bring that up as a separate issue. So, yeah, it can be done right now.
I have no further questions. I know, I know what I'm saying, but I would suggest that it was, if, unless somebody else is, you know, they're, 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 they're called on it, and that's something you can help, but I would just say to them, they have to, because they have read all, everything that you're talking about, and they have, have the information, Dr. Cooper, and they have verbal, so we'll, 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 so
these are technical corrections, they changed a few titles from she, he, to they, they changed some she, he to employee, things like that, and then they changed the address for OCR. Twenty-two sixty, same thing, some technical corrections where they changed like student to they, or he, she to student, that kind of thing, and then they also changed the, updated the address of the Office of Civil Rights, sorry, OCR's Office of Civil Rights. Twenty-two sixty oh-one, again, some more technical corrections along the same lines, putting the word they, put in employees, that kind of thing. Question about those so far, technical corrections? Twenty-two sixty-six, this change is precipitated because the National Incident Based Reporting System, NIBRAS, changed their definition of fondling, and so that whole change there is based on the new definition of what constitutes fondling when it comes to sexual harassment. Twenty-four twelve, this reflects changes to the pupil accounting manual, it has to do with when a student is on a medical leave and needs homebound services, we can still count them for pupil accounting purposes, and so this is a change that we would most likely want to adopt so that we're in alignment with the new pupil accounting standards. Forty-one sixty-two, this policy's been revised to reflect the statutory and regulatory changes to the return to duty process as required by the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, including evaluation by a qualified substance abuse professional, education and/or treatment, and follow-up evaluation. Again, this is the legal standard for getting, keeping drivers on the road and getting them back to work, things like that, and so it would be recommended to take this language because it's the legal standard. Fifty-five seventeen oh-one reflects changes to the Michigan State Board of Education anti-bullying policy. Now, these are changes that we don't have to adopt, I don't know that I saw anything in there, but I, somebody else may have picked up on something I didn't, seemed pretty boilerplate to me. Seventy-five forty oh-two, this is a change from the U.S. Department of Justice, their final rule provisions under Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, requiring state and local government entities, which includes public schools, to make web, web content and mobile applications accessible to individuals with disabilities. Mrs. Visser's over here is vigilant about making sure our stuff meets the ADA requirements, so that's a policy I think we can be in line with. Eighty-three hundred and eighty-three oh-five are basically changes to our cybersecurity policies, I did ask Mr. Mulder to review and to make sure I had his input on that, since as you can tell by the news article he's been quoted in, he's our cybersecurity expert, but those are changes I would recommend as well. And then just a reminder that there were policies that were rescinded, the six I mentioned earlier that were incorporated into others, and then policy seventy forty-one, I'm asking you to rescind because that was incorporated into policy eighty-three hundred, which we're updating.
Any other questions?
Thirrkettle?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteig?
Yes.
Raimi?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Abstain.
Motion pass.
No.
All right, can I have a motion to move into closed? Yeah, motion to move into closed session.
The motion to.
To move into closed section at seventeen, or seven twenty-eight. For approval of extension of superintendent's contract.
For superintendent evaluation.
For superintendent evaluation, first time.
Support by, motion by Brandon, support by Tanya. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same, motion pass, we're in closed session.
We will take closed session in the conference room and district office, everyone here is welcome to stay if you'd like to, but a reminder, the live stream stays live, so you are on camera and watch what you say.
Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation by a rating of ninety-seven?
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's summative performance evaluation rating of ninety-seven point six?
It's just ninety-seven.
Oh, just ninety-seven, just ninety-seven. You're running away, that's right. Support.
Motion by Liz, support by Pam? It's a roll call vote, Amy, or any discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so.
Experience for me, ninety-seven, that is the effective rating, correct?
Yeah, eighty-five to a hundred, yes. All right, Amy.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteig?
Yes.
Raimi?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
Yes.
Thirrkettle?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to extend the superintendent's contract until June thirty of twenty nineteen?
Motion to extend the superintendent's contract until June thirty, twenty twenty-nine.
Motion by Pam, support.
Support.
By Liz, discussion.
So again, new experience for me, Garth, I think there's an opportunity for us to build our relationship, you, you know, obviously expressed interest in making the investment, I appreciate that, I am too. So I, I think there's, you know, we, we can grow a little bit together, there's probably an opportunity for me to, to learn a little bit more about this role and, and from your perspective, what, what things you value, and so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Amy?
So, well, real quick, I'll be a no tonight, but that doesn't mean that your contract expires, we'll be able to revisit this next year, if that's something that you're still wanting to do?
Yes.
Yeah, it's actually in my contract that if I get an effective rating, my contract actually automatically rolls over an extra year.
So what's the vote for?
This vote is typically, only because something changes just about every year in the law, so we've had to tweak it, this is like the first time I can remember where the only thing that we're discussing is the extension.
Okay.
But, just so you know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
All right, are we good now? Amy?
Harris?
No.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Holsteig?
Yes.
Raimi?
Yes.
Tenbrink?
No.
Thirrkettle?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
The motion pass. Can I have a motion to adjourn at nine oh-five?
Motion to adjourn at nine oh-five.
Support.
Motion by Pam, support by Brandon, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say same.